Work three jobs to pay for college. Now I pay the taxes on all that land. I inherited it about three years ago. I think I should have the right to do what I want with that land. I don't think the governor should tell me what to do with it. And I think that if my grandparents, great-grandchildren want to live there, they should have the right to do so on remaining non-pond, non-swamp, non-tidal water. When I have problems with my neighbors polluting my pond, I go to the health department. When I have problems with my neighbors dumping into my tidal water, I go to public works. I have enough common sense to protect my own land. And I know how to do that. I'm a taxpayer, I'm a property owner, and I don't see where the governor comes to ask to tell me how to take care of it. Thank you for your time.
I'm Dr. Raymond Michael Warland, 695 Chlor Road, Chlor, Maryland. My family bought my farm in 1964, and we've farmed it actively. A lot of the farmers, okay, are cash poor, and their equity is in their land. And when the father dies and leaves the farm to the son, okay, who is going to pay the inheritance tax? Federal inheritance tax, if it kicks in above $1.5 million, which could easily be the value of a thousand-acre farm, or maybe that would be worth $6 million under current zoning laws. Okay, and there's the 7%, I believe, Maryland inheritance tax. What this will do, when the farmer doesn't have the liquidity to come up with the inheritance tax, the federal government will auction the farm off. We'll actually see diminishing farmland, or it'll be going to waste and not used as farmland. Second of all, okay, the Constitution says the government cannot take property without just compensation. I don't know how anybody can see that that's what's happening here. I had equity in my farm, okay, and if I can't develop it when I'm old and have to go into nursing homes for 20 years, and I only have my health insurance pays for my care for 90 days, okay, I'm going to be up a crick. Every farmer's going to be up a crick, okay, if he can't sell some building lots to pay the inheritance tax in order to save the rest of the land, or maybe, okay, to buy additional farm equipment so he can keep farming. And lastly, I would like to remind all the politicians, they're collecting money from us, okay, then they use teams of lawyers to enslave us. This is our property, not yours, not Governor O'Malley's, not any other politician. If they went open space here in Maryland, I suggest we confiscate the land of all the politicians first, tear down their house, and then we'll go out.
Hello, my name is Jackie Gregory, 7th County Way, Elton, and I'm here to support the property owners who have spoken here tonight. After an initial map for SB 236 came out of the planning department, I was surprised at the media direction of discussion by the majority of our board. Since we have five commissioners who were elected based on a platform of conservative values and property rights, I expected discussion of the map to center around how we could minimize loss of property rights by making it less restrictive. Instead, Commissioner Brumel immediately moved in the opposite direction, arguing for more land to be placed in restricted tier four, resulting in more Cecil County landowners having their property rights stolen by them by government officials.
Incorrect.
So far, Commissioners Mullen and Dunn, I'd appreciate not being interrupted.
You're not.
So far, Commissioners Mullen and Dunn followed Brumel, advocating the responsibility to the people they are supposed to serve, and instead pushed forward to an agenda that is inconsistent with the principles of liberty. I recently read a letter in the wake by Commissioner Mullen, which he argues for his position, saying that the state, in the future, may possibly take action against counties that don't comply with their agenda. Currently, the state has no such authority to punish counties or change their maps, and everybody here tonight should understand that this is a local map coming from our local commissioners. And in order for the state to ever have any kind of recourse, they would have to go to the legislature to get that authority, something that is not likely to happen anytime soon, given the controversial nature of this bill. I was surprised when I read that reasoning. Is the commissioner willing to raise the white flag and cede the rights of his constituents because of what might happen in the future? That's like an unarmed person breaking into a person's house and the homeowner responding by turning over his possessions and family without a fight. If the state is going to take the rights of the citizens, let them come and have a fight about it. What kind of leadership is it just to cede those rights rather than stand up for the citizens you were elected to represent? We deserve strong leadership on behalf of our citizens, not cowards. I have also recently read some letters written by activists in Arca and Chloa, a smart growth organization which Brumel and Mullen founded along with a handful of other people. One such letter makes the case that downzoning does not affect property value. This individual clearly does not understand the market, the free market. When there's a market for something, supply and demand determine the value. In this case, when the government is arbitrarily controlling the supply, demand of the market, land values will be affected either by increasing or decreasing depending on the tier you fall into. That's simple free-market economics. Studies by the Heartland, by Heartland, Cato Institute, and Demographia, and other organizations have shown this to be the case. This can have future impact on taxes for all of us, and as many farmers testified a few weeks ago and tonight, it will affect the equity they often need and rely on for the continuing operation of their farms. Another claim was that the restrictive map will reduce property taxes because it will reduce the need for school expansion brought about by population increases. Statements by the Maryland Department of Planning contradict this claim. This map has nothing to do with population increases. You will still have the population increases. The only thing it does is push growth into one area, so that our small towns will now become highly urbanized centers. You look at any urbanized city in America and tell me how their taxes are working out for them, that they have smaller taxes, less congestion, less smog. The studies, the reality is not there. If you want to lower taxes, you look at some of the rural counties where all this complaint is about sprawl, and they're the ones with the lowest taxes. Government-mandated smart growth not only runs contrary to the American values of liberty, freedom, and responsibility, it runs contrary to freedom and common sense. Smart growth as a government-mandated item is something, just because of its principle alone, in principle alone, it should be voted down. You have time to go back to the drawing board and include those who were left out of the process, like the planning commission. You have time to listen to the landowners who have overwhelmingly spoken against this, who you are supposed to represent. For those who are moving on to other things in a few months, you have time to leave behind a legacy that shows strength rather than cowardice. Do what you were elected to do.
I might respond. Excuse me, excuse me. She addressed me. Excuse me.
Point of order, no shouting from the audience.
This is about being heard, and she made some statements about me I would just like to respond to. And directly, I have always said I advocated more of the tier four being taken out, and I did not support a tier map that selectively removed tier four out of the map into tier three that benefited certain property owners. And this had to be a fair and equitable process. If you go to my website, I've had to put this up, and there's audio recordings supporting me. And, you know, just give me the benefit of the doubt, and you can hear for yourself. These people are well orchestrated, and they're there to support Robert Hodge.
Whoever has the website with the video, please give the address to everybody so people can see the commissioner meeting video where this is all discussed.
No, I've got a policeman back there, Commissioner Hodge, and I've got a security guard. So at this point, we're going to bring sensibility back to this whole process. I'm going to start in this row right here. And then I'll get those people in the back. I'm going to start right here at this first row, please. All right, we'll start in that back row in the back.
First of all, I think this is about hearing us right now and not defending yourselves for your campaigns and all that.
Excuse me, would you mention your name? Sorry, would you name an address for the?
James Perry, 861 East School, Philadelphia Road, Elton, Maryland. In a democracy, the government is in place to meet the needs of the people, not the other way around. The party in question with the tier four, you can't take people's land that they work for and that they are paying taxes on and just cut it in half and take, say they own but one house and 20% of it, when they use that as an investment. These people invested in that property. And they're taking that, they can sell off lands and make money in order to not be able to keep their farms. And you're trying to cut that in half so that they can't do that, basically. And I know that this board is able to, I know the state's making it do it, but this board is to be held accountable for that. Just because you're elected officials, you don't have the right to be criminals. And that's what they'll be if you take these people's lands or take money from them, take money out of their pockets. They bought the property for a certain amount, and that's how much it should be. They should be able to keep that zoning. You shouldn't be able to take the zoning and just change it because you decided to. That's absurd. The only kind of government that tells citizens what they can do with their land and changes it is socialism. You can't take somebody's land from them and tell them what they can do with it. And if you do that, that's exactly what this board is going to do. Thank you.
Anyone else in the 12th row? I'll move to the 11th.
My name is Cindy Wainett, and my parents have a farm in Chesapeake City, Maryland. I believe it's now tier four. And I have a strong feeling that if we've never gotten up at 4:00 in the morning and knocked a cow and out in the field in a tractor, driven a combine until 12:00 at night, that there really is not the right to be telling farmers what they should be doing. I'm proud to be a farmer's daughter, and I'm a real farmer's daughter. And I'm not proud of the state that the farmers are being put in right now. And I'm just asking that for my father's value of his farm is taken away from him, that you would not knock on his door and meet him and see the state of his health right now. And that is what his farm will be useful for one day, is to get him his medical needs that he is going to need, being that he has a very short lifespan at this time. So I respectfully ask that the farmers do not have their privileges taken away. This is a man that I've never saw growing up. He worked all day as a farmer, and he worked all night at another plant just to pay to farm his property. So, excuse me, Mr. Mullen, could you look at me?
I am looking at you.
This is something that I feel very strongly about. My mother, my sisters, and all the other farmers in Cecil County, their rights should not be taken away. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
My name is Eden Bernie. My address is 859 East School, Philadelphia Road. I've lived on that road all my life. My father bought property on both sides of the road so that when his kids had children, that we would have a place for them to build a house and for my grandchildren to have a place to build a house. He has 40 acres on one side of the road and 30 on the other. And that 40 acres was bought so that someday that his kids and his grandchildren and his great-grandchildren will have a place to build and live in Cecil County. And we fall in the tier four, or we'll take that away from our children and our grandchildren. And I'm just asking that you would consider the people who have worked all their lives to give something to their kids so they don't have it. And you're taking that away, and it's just not right. And I really think that you need to take into consideration that these people out here have worked all their lives, that they can give something to their kids and grandchildren, that, you know, God's not making any more land. But you shouldn't take our right away for what we worked for and what we paid taxes on and did so that our kids would have something. It's just wrong.
My name is John Tosh, 470 Rising Sun Road. And all the smart things I had to say have already been said, but I just want to stand up and say, please don't take the value of my farm away. And I would also like to give you folks a lot of credit for sitting up there and taking the abuse and listening to us. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Georgia Irwin. I live at 2712 Don Gray Road, Chesapeake City. And you have just taken everything, everything that my husband and my body have worked for all of our lives and just taken away from us. And I don't understand. This is not Russia. This is not China. This is Cecil County, the United States. Why is this happening? Because greedy people who need our government have a plan for us. They know better than we do what we want for our life, for our children, and for our property. I am totally standing with these farmers. This bill is the worst thing that's ever happened to Cecil County. Thank you.
Anybody else, Row 10?
I was here to receive you guys, what, a week ago, something like that? I asked you to listen to us, and it doesn't seem like it's getting that way. Oh, I'm Bill Crigger. I live on Wilson Road, Rising Sun, Maryland. I'm a farmer, and I am against this bill. I think that we all should have the right to deal with the land that we've worked for and that we pay taxes on, and we do it faithfully every year. I don't think we should be taking any more rights from us. I mean, I don't know how many years ago it was, but I was totally amazed. I come in the house one evening. My wife says to me, "You've got more taxes to pay." I says, "Really? I thought we paid all our taxes. Could we pay them in Pearl?" Well, lo and behold, I don't know whether you guys or Hal were dumb, but we initiated a good tax. I had to pay a $25 fee on a septic tank on three properties. Every one of them dug the holes for it, paid for the tank. It's pride that nobody else uses it, but I have to. And the next thing I know, you're probably concerned wanting taxes on our own private wells that we paid for all those properties and drilled. You know, enough's enough, folks. Let's draw a line here and do something. That's what you're in charge for. You're supposed to be smart, stand up and fight for us. Thank you.
Anne Jackson, 105 West Branch Circle, North Hastings. Everything that could be said, I think, has been said tonight. I would just like to say that I served on the comprehensive plan committee, as you all know. And I was on the line of news. I thought that as 41 citizens, that we did a very diligent job for two years. We studied, we listened to the public, we listened to the state. We did stay under the guidelines of 66B. And I thought we put a very well-mastered comprehensive plan together. It's very disappointing to think that we had worked two years on something that the state is now going to change in just a matter of months. I ask you to please consider what we've already done. We have the power to tell the state no. And I am just encouraging you to do that. It's commendable that we want to take care of farmland and that we want to preserve it. But we have to preserve the farmer first. The farmer is the steward of the land. Without the farmers, we're not going to have that wonderful open space that everybody wants to keep.
Anybody else in Row number 10? Row 9?
Earl Cad, 694 Kitty Town Road, Elton, Maryland. I've been informed that the latest 236 cent bill tier map is favoritism. This is coming from relatively reliable sources. I have my suspicions on who's involved, and I'll leave the names out. But I would like to remind you that I smell doo-doo in the employee development rights vote. It was suggested that that property would be affected by Plan Maryland and not worth our money. You denied all this with your votes. In retrospect, those of you who ignored the smell, put our feet right in, thanks. Well, guess what? That smell's back. This time, it won't be pet waste. A vote on approval, a vote for approval on SB 236, the latest draft map, dragged this county into a cesspool. A cesspool of no growth, a cesspool that will doom its citizens to a future of far less than what it is capable of. Please bear in mind, this county is broken. Why would anybody with a choice doom this county to an economic death sentence? Put your pet organizations aside and vote for what is best for this county and not for this Plan Maryland, United Nations Agenda 21 assault on our personal property rights. Now, I would like to address Commissioner Brumel with the record. You recently posted a statement implying those objecting to SB 236 are misinformed. How dare you? As a candidate, you ran on transparency, yet you take down any objections. Allow me to remind you of your vote record. Aspen Point costs us jobs and tax base. Carpenter's Point downzoning will cost us legal fees and compensation. And last but not least, evicting Artisan left us holding a huge duty back. If you vote in favor of SB 235, it will be the crown jewel in your legacy of idiocracy and that you have left the citizens of this county with. Thank you.
Anybody else in Row 9? If not, Row 9.
My name is Stephen Maltour. Right now, they're in the 200 Focus Main, right on the corner. I just want to say, I'm not a Republican, I'm not a Democrat, I'm American. I've had my first taste of the government when I got drafted into Vietnam. And since then, I've seen over the years, I'm 62 years old, and I've seen the government take more and more and more. And I've seen people getting madder and madder and madder. I think that's where the Tea Party came from. And if they keep taking it, it reminds me of our forefathers. It was taxation without representation. And what they do, they talk enough until they say enough is enough, and they fought back. If we don't all get it together somehow, right? Everybody is going to get upset, and things are not going to be better. They're going to get worse.
My name is Charlotte Giv. I live at 352 Wheaton Road. I moved to Cecil County in '79, or yeah, '79, because my father-in-law had the thought to buy property when they were going to put the byway around Newark, and they were going to put it through his house. So he bought property in Cecil County. Now, I have five children, I've raised them, I've all gone to college. And my husband is out of work because of the economy. And if you take our farm and not compensate us, you're basically taking the farm rights and not compensating us, what are we going to do when he retires in two years and we have no money to live on because he's not getting his pension or he's not getting what we need to live on? I mean, we invested in that farm, we did not, we did not take any mortgage out on it because we wanted it for our retirement. We did not take money out of it to put our kids through college. He worked to put the kids through college. Now, I don't know anybody else who can say that they put, well, it's three and a half kids through college so far. So I would appreciate it if you, I heard some good ideas from the people who spoke first about, you know, don't sign it. And I would appreciate if you could take that into consideration. That's all I would say.
Anybody else in Row 9? Move on to Row 8?
My name is Cliff Sterns, and I reside at 746 Conal Window Road. What I'm hearing tonight is definitely that 236 should be shelved. And you should listen very carefully because we've got a lot of people over in there. I personally bought my farm in the Preservation Act and was paid for by Cecil County. But I'm not concerned about myself. I'm concerned about my neighbors and my friends and fellow farmers. And this has to be addressed immediately. Thank you.
Anybody else in Row 9? Move on to 8? Want to go Row 8? Row 7?
My name is Jill Burke. I live at 2689 Yan Brown in Elton. I would like to urge the commissioners to vote yes to draft a map for, for several reasons. The first reason is, other drafts of the tier map lets development take place in the rural areas of our county. This will lead to future tax increases for current county taxpayers. Residential development costs taxpayers much more money than preserving agriculture. When large-scale developments go into any area, almost children must attend school, road must be serviced, police protection given. Agricultural preservation of rural areas will undoubtedly save the county money. The second reason is, the northern agricultural area and the southern agricultural area of our comprehensive plan restrict the number of houses allowed to be built. And I just want to mention here, off of my written remarks, that many of the people here are under the impression that this tier map is telling us what to do. The comprehensive plan and the zoning laws tell us what to do. This map will not affect land parcels smaller than 59 acres in the northern agricultural part of the county and 119 acres in the southern part because current zoning already restricts such parcels to five or fewer new residences. Third, I support using the- Third, I support using the comprehensive plan to create a tiers map, and I've read that from many other people this evening. Map four best accomplishes this objective. Our comprehensive plan is something that was worked on by many citizens, and I've heard several of them speak tonight and government officials. It was adopted by the commissioners of this county. By using the other tier maps as guidelines, the commissioners are under risk of creating a map that ignores the comprehensive plan and gives us sprawl. So I just want to say that Map Four most resembles the comprehensive plan, and I think it should be approved since apparently, as far as I know, the state does tell the counties what to do, and they do have to follow these, these laws that are handed down. If we don't like them, that's a whole other can of worms, and I think that people have to go out and try and change them in the proper places, not at the county level because there's no power over that. Thank you.
Anybody else in Row 8? Row 7?
My name is Alan McCarthy, 652, Bill Street, Chesapeake City, Maryland. I do not support Senate Bill 236. I think it goes against the very grainy nature of the county's comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan took years to provide, was approved by all the approving authorities, and now it's being trashed as one person repeatedly stated in three months by the state governor. I believe this entire thing is an egregious overreach by the governor, by the legislature, and by MDE to control development and property values of Cecil County. It selectively devaluates people's ground, primarily farmers and large landowners, at the expense of the people in Tier One or Tier Two, which then will have to pay increased taxes to make the year's budgets work. I also feel that many farmers have spent their entire lives acquiring these farms, developing assets, and these assets will be devalued also. Balance sheets will take an immediate hit, their ability to borrow money will be lost, and in the long run, when they do die, what they haven't paid in taxes to the federal and state governments will be taken from them by the tax man. I could go on almost indefinitely on my dislikes of this thing, but I strongly suggest that if you should pass any of these, it'd be as lenient as it possibly can in favor of the farmers and the landowners. Thank you.
Hey, my name's Tim Dawson. I reside at 56 Touche Lake, Rising Sun, Maryland. In 1968, my mother-in-law bought this 60-acre income-producing property at absolute auction. This is Touche Lake and Touche Farms. She bought it for investment property. At the time she bought the property, she had a choice as to what the zoning would be. It could be high-density, which would cost her extra every year, pay her taxes when she was aware of, or it could have been as agriculture. She chose high-density. In 1978, Cecil County subdivision regulations made sure that we, she made sure that everything was copacetic with that, and the property was set up still as high-density. December 1st, 1980, local home licenses. The zoning was changed to include local homes for again high-density. December 1982 was another proposal that she was there for. In October 1992, revised Section 32H3 to concentrate development in areas suitable for growth as designated in the Cecil County Comprehensive Plan, which is what she planned for. Now, we've come to the point where we have Bill 236 and Draft Map Four, and it puts us in Tier Four, which means that all these years, 44 years, she's been paying higher taxes for high residential area, trailer park, whatever. And now, at the point they're ready to sell, she's 82 years old, not going to be able to do anything with it. According to the way I read it, we're in Tier Four, and we'd only be able to put three homes on an entire place, 60 acres. So what happens, all these years she's paid all this extra money to maintain this high-density? She gets screwed, is the way I see it. And we're not very happy with it, I don't think we should pass this. And if we do pass it, we should do a little board homework. Mr. Resnick owns property right next to us on the other side of our driveway. It's a 15-acre septic system, and it's considered Tier One. I really do not understand how this map was made out to, thank you for your time.
My name is Janelle Dawson, and my husband just spoke. I believe in Tier Four, or on Map Four, we're Tier Three. Once after that, we suddenly become Tier Four. I don't see how you can live next to the biggest, buzzer house in the county, which is an agricultural infested way. They can do anything they want there, play music as loud as they want all day long, but I happen to like next to the voters. It's a good thing. We don't have any rights, and now you're saying that it's going to be Tier Four. And so my mother can't leave it to the sisters for their retirement convent. It doesn't make any sense.
Ron Hartman, 164, 164 Little Beach Road, Oklahoma. If you look at Draft Map Four, Tier Map, Draft Four, basically, all the land that's in Tier Four area is either NAR or SAR land, or you have some, you have the natural preserve in the land. So, I have a caveat. I suggest that whatever tier map that you send down to the state, that whatever land is placed in the Tier Four, if it is presently zoned, say like SAR, you put SAR land into Tier Four, it's presently zoned 1 to 20. You put NAR land into Tier Four, it's presently zoned 1 to 10. Caveat is that you send a tier map down stating that the land still can be developed per its present zoning rights, so that if you put NAR land into Tier Four, you could develop it, make your subdivisions at its present zoning of 1 to 10. Or if you put SAR land into Tier Four, you can still develop it at its present zoning of 1 to 20. And that caveat would be, okay, state, here's our tier map, but this is our conditions. Thank you for your time.
My name is Ed Karens. I live at 104 Jackson Hall Street Road. I also served on the comprehensive plan committee, and we have a family farm on Jackson Hall. One purpose of Senate Bill 236 is to protect farmland from residential development, and it does a great job of that by requiring the county to classify its lands into four consecutively numbered tiers, with Tier Four being the most restrictive on residential development. Controversy exists about whose lands are placed in Tier Four. Senate Bill 236 clearly states that all of our NAR and SAR zoned land should be in Tier Four to follow the law. Beyond legal, that is also consistent with our county's comprehensive plan, our priority preservation plan, our master water and sewer plan, our zoning map, and good common sense about what's best for the county as a whole. Of the tier maps presented by the county so far, Draft Four comes closer to following those plans. Let's consider the practical benefits of protecting farmland in Cecil County from residential development. We need farmland. By we, I mean the county, the state, the country, and the world. Population is rapidly approaching the point where there is not enough farmland to feed everyone, a condition that can lead to unfathomable disease and wars. Two, almost all of Cecil County's farmland is outside of our designated Route 40 I-95 growth corridor, where it's the most economical to supply county services. If we restrict sprawl residential development in agricultural areas, we will minimize our future county tax increases. Three, most of our farmers want to continue farming. They do not want to be pressured into selling out because there are too many neighbors next door. Four, it will preserve our county's desirable rural character. Five, I have seen reports that farming is becoming increasingly profitable. If that is true, it will bring more income into our county instead of having it go out with residential developments. Finally, if we choose not to follow the law, the state will impose severe restrictions on us. At the least, they will probably cut off funding for preservation. We can only guess what other punishing things they will do to our county. I ask this commission to please, please consider what's best for the county as a whole and put all of our farmland into Tier Four. Thank you for your attention.
Is there anybody else in Row Six? Anybody else in Six will go five?
Yeah, Harold Davis, 695 Wheaton Road, Earlville, University. I do own a farm down there, been there for 50 years. I do not approve of the tier maps. The tier maps depreciate the value of the farm. Thank you.
Anybody else in Row Five? Row Four?
My name is David Van Dyke. I live at 1026 Nottingham Road. And my question today would be, how many more--